I have to manage why we're in this. That's why I'm so lost. These are my symbols, him, Howard. As a, that means how the county way change, this is a football.
Well, there's like a bar on the bar on that? And if it hits the bar, then it's a car.
This little jump to the rail.
I wave at the flag and I point at the bar.
Or to the elevator.
Is that me?
Which, about up to their.
I've forgotten the name for their way. That's okay. And then there's a football. Football. What?
A what?
A foot fault? It's like if their foot touches the line before they've served the ball. That's another good one. A tap. I think that's all my thoughts on that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody's had an opportunity to see the agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, how do you vote?
Are we doing roll call or?
Well, I don't think we will because we're not going to have Linda on this, so.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. The next bullet point is just the mayor's statement. I just wanted to formally apologize for any unprofessionalism that I displayed last meeting. When you're here for that many hours and you're beating a dead horse, it starts to kind of wear on me, so. I apologize. All right, how about the minutes from the September 8th and September 21st council meetings? Anybody want to make a motion on those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 8th and September 21st council meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, yes. And we move on to what appears to be the second, number five, public input.
Sorry. I did have a couple of things, just really briefly. I handed out signatures and this will come up in the change to the personnel manual. And it's just some suggestions. It's for our protection as council people and protection as city that it says in the personnel manual that the mayor approves overtime. And just so that's clear, just do some sort of a simplified approval of the overtime or the comp time. And I'm just suggesting that. I also was thinking of the South Dakota retirement system. We had had, and we do have, if I remember accurately, a city librarian, city school librarian. And it's my understanding they put 20 hours in for school and 20 hours in for the city. Am I correct in that? Do we know?
No.
No?
They're just a city employee, 20 hours a week.
Okay, but, but, so they're not, they're not employed by the school?
Not at all.
Okay, because that would, would, would make 40 hours and would, they would have been eligible for South Dakota retirement, but just 21, 20 hours they're not. And I think that that's, oh, one other quick thing, it's coming up. The Union County Fair Board, in the original agreement between the county and the city for the land, that the city had final say on any subleasing. And I don't think we're taking advantage of that. We're not insisting that we have a say on who they, who they sublet to. And that's just a point of interest for you guys. So that's everything I have.
Is there any other public input?
Yes, I would like to question, a question for Ms. Larson here. Letter sent, I don't know where it was sent, but I've gotten a copy of it. What is your plan for the ambulance?
My plan for the ambulance is to keep it going. I, I, I've had too many people come to me and make the comment about the enforced transport to Haywarden. I have a problem with that and a lot of other people have a problem with that. And it's, it's something that's been ongoing since we started the ambulance up in 1996, that there are people that definitely do not want to go to the Haywarden hospital. There's documentation in the state health documents that if the pa, if the patient is competent, they are in charge of their treatment. And it's, it's something that needs to be, it's, it's important. There was a comment made about the time going from Haywarden or the time going to Canton. It's not super measurable. The, the three hours, that's to Sioux Falls and back, that's not the transport time. The transport time from the patient, from the pickup point to the delivery point to the receiving entity, the time doesn't vary a whole lot. That's why, that's why I made the comments.
That isn't taken into account for the volunteers' time they're giving.
Oh, I know very well what the volunteers give. I know very well.
Yeah, but I'm getting at is the volunteers don't want to give that and neither do the businesses want to give people the time to go do that. We can have them at Haywarden, which is a hospital, is the closest hospital. And if you've called 911 for an emergency, that's where you can get the closest care. There's no question in that.
The question is where the patient wants to go and the patient has the final say.
It doesn't matter where the patient wants to go.
Oh, it does, it does, if you're crossing state lines.
Actually Medicare and Medicaid will not pay if you bypass the closest facility.
I'm sorry, I disagree with you.
I don't see what this has to do with the city of Alcestra.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just saying that, that the people, we, we have, yes, yes, we took great pains to do that. The thing is, is that we have the citizens of Alcestra, they're our concern too. And as I said, that's why I, that's why I wrote what I did and I stand firmly by it.
Hearing 911 call, they're not concerned where they're going. They're concerned about getting help. Then they can decline transport. That's all there is to it.
And they can, they can, they can decline transport to Haywarden.
Well, then they decline our transport.
But like I said, you want to take the chance? Go ahead, you take the chance, but, but as I said.
In our bylaws, it says right now we transport to Haywarden.
As I said, when I was involved with the ambulance and when we were involved in the ambulance.
You're not involved anymore. You're not making any decisions anymore.
What letter are you, what, can I ask what this letter is?
Can I get up to show you the, I got an email about the letter, is that okay?
Yep.
Sure.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
All right, public input. So this letter was sent to?
All I know is I got it from Jeff Nahaba from Haywarden.
So was it addressed to him?
I don't know who it was addressed to. I know he got it from Haywarden. The city council saw it. I don't know where they picked it up from. My issue is by doing what you're doing, you're tearing down a lot of progress that's been made in the last six months. The ambulance was broke long before this. We were waiting for, there was numerous times as a fireman, I'm waiting and doing basic aid for someone who's laying there dying or whatever else, and we can't do anything. Because we have no ambulance. And by doing this, you are going to scare away anybody who is wanting to try to get on this thing. You cannot do this now.
I, as you aptly pointed out, am not volunteering for the ambulance anymore. I know how the ambulance was run when I was on it. I see a difference. The thing is, I'm going by what the people have an opinion on. They come to me, they tell me, and they told me back then, we don't want to go to Haywarden.
It has nothing to do with back then, today isn't today. And we have not.
They're, they're still coming to me today and saying, no, it doesn't, I don't agree with me.
Well, then you tell them to come to one of the pres, one of the directors or assistant director of the ambulance to talk to them about it. So they can talk to us directly.
When, when you're sending these letters to people, are you?
I didn't send a letter to anyone.
Okay, so what is this?
I have no idea.
Sounds like, it looks like it comes from the city of, somebody, some official from the city of Haywarden.
No, it comes off my blog.
Okay. This is, this is detrimental to the ambulance, okay? If you do not want an ambulance, keep this stuff up, because people will then be upset with it. That's what we're getting at.
And what I'm getting at is.
As a citizen, not as like an official, this is not your opinion, you're not holding yourself out as this is the official opinion of the city of Alcestra.
No, no, this is, this is, this is my, this is my opinion as a person and a former ambulance volunteer.
Okay, but you need to take into account the position you're in now, okay? So people are going to look at you as a city alderman and think that this is coming from the city.
Nope, nope, it's very clear, it's very clear where it's coming from.
Okay, can I ask anybody else that talks to you about this and is complaining about it? Can you give them, you can give them my phone number for all I care.
They have your phone number.
Well, then why are they not calling me? I haven't heard anything about this.
Like I said, I can't, I can't control, I know people come to me, they talk to me, I answer them, and, you know, I, there's, there's, there is no reason why we should be sending people to Haywarden if they don't want to go.
The only answer to them that you should be giving is can you talk to the director of the ambulance or assistant director? That should be what you're telling them. So we can explain it to them. Because this is very clearly wrote in South Dakota state law that we can do this. We can transport across state lines. We can take them to one hospital and one hospital only, okay?
Do you know how many times I stood in, in Haywarden Hospital and we had a parking problem? And if you know what parking an ambulance, it's still the same hospital.
Yeah, I, I think we're done, I think we got the public input portion of it and I appreciate you guys, your input. It isn't really a city entity, but I think that you're right. We need to be very careful in how we word anything that we say.
Yeah.
Because it's misconstrued as coming from the city, so.
Can I, can I just ask, as a, as a public entity here, if anybody comes to you guys with any issues, can you give them a phone number so that they can direct, contact me or Nahaba directly?
We can also.
Or Pat, and we will, we will take care of the issue?
Anything I've heard when people talk about the ambulance, I always go directly to you guys.
Thank you.
I do have a real quick question based on a comment you came out. If, if you, like, the citizens are our concern, absolutely. Literally our only job, so that's fine. What is the anticipated idea that we're gonna, that we're going to take?
I'm sorry, I'm not following.
The citizens are my concern.
Yeah.
You've, you've acknowledged that and I think that that's true. If that's the case, what are you proposing that the city do in order to, to do something? Because I'm, the way I'm seeing it, the only way that they can really change the policy of the ambulance of taking them to Haywarden would be to talk to the Haywarden ambulance, or the, not Haywarden, the Alcestra ambulance, get them to change their own policy. That's how policy change works. I'm curious as to what you think the city could have done to change that.
I can't remember the name of the documentation. The state of South Dakota puts out a document, it's a big thick document, and it says as long as the patient is coherent and competent, they make, they make the final decision on their medical treatment, period.
Excuse me, but if, if the people that are manning the ambulance won't be gone from their work that long, or the employers won't let them be gone from work that long, how can they get to someplace that's more than 20 minutes away?
Then we have to look at bringing in a private ambulance for hire.
Which the city would have to pay for.
No, it wouldn't.
Who would pay for it? Because I'm, I, I mean, even if I'm willing to like take that and say like, okay, that's the concern, I still don't understand what you're thinking this, like that we as a council right here, right now, well, obviously not right now, it's not on the agenda, but like what we could do. That's like even, I'm willing to accept the South Dakota.
We're putting our residents first and, and if they come to us as a, people coming to us as a council, can you help us? Then we direct them to the people that they need to talk to at the state and at the, you know.
If they need air in Sioux Falls, they will get transported to Sioux Falls from Haywarden.
Can you put a disclaimer on your blog that says these are your views and your views only? They do not represent the city and if somebody has a problem with it, they need to come to you personally?
Yeah, they, they, that's already, that's already there.
I, I've never looked at your blog, but I'm assuming it's not there because these gentlemen are here tonight because people seem to think that your blog is a reflection of city business.
No, no, it is, it is purely, purely announcing what's going on, what's happened in the meetings and what's gone down. As far as the decisions, as, as, as far as the decisions go, that the ambulance was the one that came up with the idea that they need to haul everybody to Haywarden. And it gets down to timing. And the timing's not relevant to the amount of time of getting the person, the patient from Alcestra to a, a treatment facility.
Okay, I don't, I don't care what's on your blog. I'm going to be honest with you. Whatever you want to put on there, go ahead and put it on there. Put something on there that says they are your views and if somebody has a problem with it, they need to contact you and you only.
Yes.
Sam, I have a question. Correct me if I'm wrong, but state law always trumps us, right? So if the state law says that they can transfer them across state lines, there's nothing I can do.
No.
To be like, actually you can't. So state law would trump. So the only thing that we can really do is to advocate our citizens to reach out to their state legislators.
Or talk to the.
Perfect.
All right, thank you. I don't see you on here for street updates. Do you know of anything?
The only thing I know of is that Parker will take advantage of the nice weather and he hopes to do the Alcoa custom coil lines this week.
That would be nice. We had a lot of people that are complaining about people parking way too diagonal and you can't get as many vehicles in there.
He's gonna, I'm sorry, I didn't hear him. He's gonna do what?
He's gonna paint lines where custom coils and Alcoa is. They're just like they did it in front of the bank in the Arleeds, so. Well, then we will move on to water and wastewater updates. Dale was back.
Aye.
Aye.
You all got one of these sheets. It's an estimate for the new intermediate well pumps that are needed down to wastewater facility. The past few months, in the past year, I've been removing the old pumps, getting them fixed and putting them back in repeatedly. It's kind of a process that goes over and over and over because they're old and more out. Since we're going to renovate the plant, I would guess some, some year, sometime in the near future, I'm thinking might as well put these new pumps in. They're kind of the critical link down there, but if they don't run, I'm kind of stressed out, to be honest with you. So it's a lot of money, but we'd spend it anyway eventually. So I would recommend that we would move on this one.
Question Dale, is this something that would be part of the upgrade?
It's the pumps that they recommend for the upgrade.
Okay, so.
So this is what we would be buying anyway, later appointed.
And we can use, continue to use these when you upgrade it?
This is what they're asking for.
And you want this right now, right?
Well, I, yeah, it'll take about 10 weeks to get everything here, the pumps and all the apparatus I needed to install them. So, and right now I'm limping along on one. So I mean, I mean, I can remove it and get it repaired again, but if I can just limp along until we get the new ones in, we'll save that much anywhere.
How much does it cost to get them repaired?
Uh, it depends what's wrong. It can be $500, it can be $1,500 or more. So. My view is you're going to spend this money anyway some, some point in time.
I noticed there's no agenda item for the motion, are we?
We could, we could add, we could add one as an emergency, is that correct, Sam?
The quote just gave in today.
Yeah, I don't know that it, I don't know that it would be an emergency.
Okay, we may have to have a second quote.
It's not just $1,000. You know, unless, unless Dale tells us the failure is likely or imminent, then we could probably.
Well, you know, I can't say it's, it's imminent, you know, I could say.
But what he, what he did experience this last weekend was alarms going up in the middle of the night. So then he'd come in at 1:00.
One of the pumps is not working. So we have one left. And that thing has experienced some hiccups, you know, in the middle of the night, I come in and reset it and it runs. But if it wouldn't happen to start up again, then it'd be a whole new set of things I'd have to do to keep the plant running.
Well, what happens if it fails? Today, what happens if it fails today? What do you got to do?
Well, I'd have to start up another pump to bypass the system, to get it to keep, you know, moving through.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at Dale is the thing's not going to shut down and we're going to have sewers packed up if.
Oh, no, it'll, you know, worst case scenario, it'll just flood down there.
Okay. I like your optimism.
Well, that's bottom line, if everything else fails, it'll just flood.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I don't know that we're required to.
So what's the damage if it floods?
Uh, the last time we had it done and all flooded, it was $30, $35,000 of the damage.
Well, that might be a murder.
That might be.
That might change your tooth here.
I mean, it's your plant, you don't have to do anything if you don't want to, it's no scale.
And this would be commensurate with the upgrade.
This is what they're asking for in renovation.
Okay.
The exact same thing, so if you decide to renovate, you're going to spend this money anyway. That's the point I'm going to make there.
So basically it's two pumps.
Yep, and that's installation too.
Which does give you redundancy, at least, you know, one.
That's, that's the, that's the way it's supposed to work. You got one, you know, and if that fails, the other one will kick in so you can repair this one. And it's, yeah, so.
And I don't know if you noticed, but on the quote, delivery time is 10 to 12 weeks.
Now that kind of lends a little bit more. I think, I think, my opinion this is an emergency.
I agree.
Well, if you guys wouldn't mind moving the table this item until a little further down the line, I can probably look and see if. If that works for us, that'd be okay.
Right, it's a 10 to 12 week wait, so I think we're.
That's a long.
I think he meant he's gonna.
No, I know, but what I'm saying is it's a 10 to 12 week wait, so pushing it down a few items isn't extending the sum. He's not going to get the pumps tonight.
It's not delaying Christmas.
We will revisit this later on this evening. Okay, uh, number eight, we go into this discussion regarding Tim Rankin's pay rate mileage covering Dale's COVID hours.
So while Dale was in quarantine, he was still gracious enough to come in and go to the sewer plant and generate the reports and take the samples. And then he'd leave them there and then Tim Rankin, who is also certified, he was our wastewater guy before Dale, he would come in and pick up the samples and take them to Sioux Falls. And he, between he and Dale would also be our go-to person because we, we have to have a certified operator on our plant. So I called Tim when Dale first started his quarantine and I asked what he would charge the city to be our go-to person and he said that he would just do the work for us, assist us wherever was needed because he felt it was part of his job with the company he works with now. And I said I didn't feel comfortable about that because we're relying on him a lot if Dale would have been incapacitated. Well, now that we know how it did turn out, I called Tim again today and I asked what he would like for compensation from the city. And again, he really said, you know, I, I don't need anything. And I said, Tim, this is above and beyond what anyone would ask of you. I said, and I don't want to shortchange you, so what is it you would like? And he's like, well, if you would just get me a gift card from Total Stop for gas. So I guess if I would figure it out, I think he made three trips to Sioux Falls for us. I'm estimating 45 miles round trip, three times would be 270 miles and the state mileage, or the IRS mileage rate is 575. So that would be $155.25. I think that would be the minimum amount that we would give him. I'd like to see us give more for him stepping up and assisting us.
We might have to pay him by the hour, wouldn't we?
All he.
Takes two hours to get the sample up and back.
And part of his job does involve travel, so he could have been visiting other communities. He could have, you know, and just run them off on his route to somewhere else.
I'm pretty sure we still pay him by the hour.
But we wouldn't have to pay him for hours that he's not solely working for us.
It would just be, yeah, it would be drive time then, is what you would be paying.
No, I'm not saying we need compensation for stuff he's doing for other people, I'm saying we need to pay him by the hour. So. Just under federal labor law, I'm pretty sure we would have to, but Mr. Nelson, maybe you.
I, I understand what we're trying to do and I, I think it's not a great thing for the city. I just think it's safer for us if we compensate him at a certain rate as opposed to how we'd like to be compensated. It just, it, it gets messy if we end up giving gift cards or alternative forms of compensation for somebody who worked on something for us. A little hard for the auditors to figure out too, isn't it? Yeah. Dale, was there a lot more hours than just taking this stuff up and back?
Well, you know, like you said, on average, it's how fast you drive, but. Well, you know, like you said, on average, it's how fast you drive, but.
Yeah.
Between two and three, yes.
I, I make, I make a motion, we paid ten, ten bucks an hour for his drive time, should've been six hours, plus the hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-five cents mileage.
I second that motion.
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry? Can you repeat the motion?
I make a motion that we pay Tim Rankin ten dollars an hour for six hours' time, plus a hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-five cents mileage. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, how do you vote?
Aye. Aye.
Proposed? I'd yes. Police Department updates. Chief, Chris.
I don't know a lot, um, like the windshield on the truck, and then we're looking at that mobile software. Sat down with Pat in the last month here, went over where our budget's at. We did budget for our mobile software this year, uh, we just, as we're getting towards the end of the year here, we made sure we were still gonna be okay. It looks like we are, Pat and I went over the finances, and I think we're doing pretty good yet, so. We have the budget, so I kicked you guys out the quote, uh, updated quote, um, they knocked off the, we don't need any training for the software, we're, we're updated on it. Austin and I already use it. So, my original quote that I had earlier in the year was like five hundred more because of training, but just pretty redundant to have training when we're already using the software in-house. We just don't have it on mobile. I guess, are there any questions or?
So is this, is a, is this a yearly thing, Daniel?
No, no, um, this is, uh, this is for the software, much like when we bought the, um, software for the computers in, in the office. I believe our yearly does go up a little bit, currently, I think, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, is around four hundred a year for our yearly fee. I think it goes up a little bit when we add the mobile, but this is a kind of a one-time payment to get the software.
Can you, I mean, I already know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask you just in case they don't.
Sure.
What are the advantages to having mobile software?
Sure, there's, um, there's a lot, so, I mean, I could boil it down to officer safety, we have the information right in front of us. Time, time is of essence, a lot of times we'll run, run certain, certain scenes, certain incidents, um, it's, it's right in front of us. Can run license plates and names and get data real time in front of us. One of the other things that I like is, is it gets us out of the office, I can copy-pump reports in the car.
Not while driving.
Right. Little bit more of an officer presence, um, I don't have to sit in the office and type on a narrative for eighty percent of my time on my shift, I can, I can be out in the public a little bit more. I could sit in the school parking lot and type on a report if I want to. Um, and then the, one of the bigger aspects of it is it brings all of our data and everything we need with us down to jail when we lodge somebody in jail. There's so many times that I need to pull up probable cause narrative and different aspects from my report, I really need to pull up down there. Right now, can't do that, come back home and update everything. If I apply for a warrant down at jail for blood or something like that for a DUI, I would have all, all, everything in my laptop in the car. Those are a few, I mean, I could keep going, you probably won't listen to this.
No, I just, I know when I was riding with you and Austin, like, when dispatches, and you need a license plate run, or you need information, and you can't get it from them. Being able to run it yourself would've been a huge advantage time-wise and, like you said, safety-wise.
Yeah, to find out that the person you have stopped has a felony warrant or.
Armed robbery.
Oh, and it's happened, and I don't even know that person is sitting in my car, so, I mean, I don't know what their past is, you know, sometimes it's lag work. Dispatch is nine-one-one as well, they get busy, so.
So the total cost is that thirty-four eighteen and seven cents?
Yep.
Is that you asking for a motion?
Well, we kind of are out of order here, but letter C says discussion on mobile software equipment, I would need a motion.
I will make a motion to approve paying three thousand four hundred eighteen dollars and seven cents for the mobile software equipment.
Seconded.
Motion's been made, seconded, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Proposed? I'd yes.
Yes, sorry about that, ma'am, I didn't see the surplus item.
That's alright.
I thought that was last month, I didn't know.
I, I don't know if she needed permission to advertise that stuff and all that stuff, so that's why it's on there.
So, Sam.
Yeah.
Did you get a chance to write the publication?
No, I didn't, so, uh, any, any holdup on this is my fault, I haven't gotten a chance to write the, the publication, um, and I'm sorry, Pat, I was loading this up. So, we have authorized the sale of the fire, I'm correct?
Last week.
Okay, yeah, we did that, so, um, and we can, we just have to publish it twice according to the ordinance you and I read today, so. It can be written tomorrow to you.
Okay.
And, yeah, just when you're done.
I definitely have to have it by Friday.
Okay, I'm gonna put it on my calendar right now.
Um, and still for a November second open date, and the gentleman that talked to you came into our office, he wanted a bid sheet, so.
Sure.
I do know who doesn't know.
Yeah, people like old cop guns, I don't know.
So Sam.
They're used more.
Same for far.
I'm sure I've got it somewhere, but if you got it, you wanna send it to me, that'd be.
Also, this is basically already taken care of because of last meeting, right? We don't need a motion.
Nope.
How did the month go, chief?
Uh, we.
So far.
Little bit slower call volume wise, um, we, uh, quite a few things going to trial in October, uh, it's gonna be a scheduling nightmare for me. We're gonna be in trial the whole center part of the month, uh, hot stuff coming, coming up here. So just getting prepared for that and then keeping, keeping up on reports. Other than that, that's, that's what I got.
Speaking of keeping up on reports, when, when will the software be available to you and when will you be able to take advantage of it then?
Um, so currently, we don't have Wi-Fi in the cars either, um, we did budget for it this year, we just haven't had it set up, because we didn't have the mobile software, so there's really no reason for it. If we had the Wi-Fi as soon as we signed up, signed the sheet, we sent it off to them, um, I would say it's installed fairly quickly. I mean, they can do most of it remotely, which is the good part now, so. The, uh, when we did the computers in-house, they had to come down, but I think that most of this will be remote, so relatively soon.
And you are gonna work on getting the, I suppose their hotspots is what they really turn up.
Yeah, that's what we looked into, uh, it wasn't crazy, I thought, I thought they were a little high on price, but I'd like to find something a little bit cheaper, I wish there was more broadband scenario for us, but. It's looking like the best option is like a Verizon hotspot, I guess.
So now you said call volume is better, but have you seen anything change with the meth problems?
I would say in the last, I think we had one, ma, maybe ma, I mean, month to month, I would say it's down a little bit this month, uh, for September, but. Still ongoing issues and drug cases are still being worked, so.
Give me bombs.
So.
Oh, yeah, no, no bomb threats, thank God.
No bombs, sorry.
Oh, bombs.
It was a joke. I know, last time you said you have a bomb for everybody or something.
Yeah.
But also.
You said the ice wobble there, but you said bomb threat.
No, I'm sorry. I should take this off when I'm talking.
Cause that was, we have that too.
Yeah.
Thursday is cool.
Yeah. That's all I got, unless you guys have any more questions?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So then, we will move on to the Department Hill Cemetery landfill updates, Parker's not here either. He mentioned that he's hopefully going to find some time this next week, weather should be pretty nice for that, painting the stripes.
And he also has started tree trimming out of the cemetery, so you may notice the difference in that, taking those evergreens and trimming the bottoms out.
Yeah, he's got about half of them done, really looks nice, taking all the volunteer trees out, trimming the spruce trees up about five feet high so he can drop them in there. Looks good. Well, and let's move on to the golf course, library updates. Uh, golf course is gonna be closing at the end of the month, so we're gonna be doing, uh, build some specials on our drinks to give our supply down. Some of the stuff can be sent back, it was not, you know, broken cases. Taking care of some of the odds and ends food we have out there, and then by the end of the month, they'll have everything closed up, so. So you said end of the month, the thirty-first? October, yes. Uh, Department Health was there for about ten minutes, Mike said, didn't really mention anything that, uh, was a deficiency, so. That's the first time he's been out all summer, probably because of the COVID, they didn't wanna go anywhere where they might get something, so.
Is that just checking out because they serve food out there or?
Yep.
He did score a hundred out of a hundred.
They, they did what?
He scored a hundred out of a hundred.
Oh, that's the first time.
We've never gotten a hundred in that before.
No, they always find something, but like it's, you know, he's, he, I tested, well, how long would it take, he said about ten minutes. Looked in the refrigerator and checked out, you know, ice machine, seen him had three sinks to wash dishes and poop. So, yeah, they, they weren't quite as thorough as they had been some years, but a hundred out of a hundred is good. Uh, library, we still have some used books and we're gonna turn anything that, uh, hasn't been sold yet, I talked with Michelle Saturday. Anything that's, uh, hasn't been sold, probably in the next couple, three days, we're gonna take over or see if the thrift store wants them. And, uh, anything else, we'll probably put out a box at a time for people to grab it for free. And other than that, she's, she said she's having some patrons coming in in the evenings too. She has a five to seven P.M. mask required on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then, uh, that's basically for the convenience and the safety of the older folks that might wanna come when the students aren't around. And then Saturday morning, she's open for four hours, so. Everything seems to be going alright. Thank you. And then we go to legal updates.
Okay, well, I'll start with where we left off, here's what I've got so far, um, like most of my answers, the answer on this one is we maybe can do this tonight. So, um, I'll start with one twenty-five, one point one, uh, which is your notice requirement for meetings. You've got to post proposed agenda, obviously twenty-four hours in advance, so this is an agenda item, but it's not a specific item. I don't know that it's specific enough to qualify for a vote, it, it could be, and given it's an emergency, someone may be able to challenge you for, uh, violation of that statute, which is a class-two misdemeanor. I don't know who would do that, but it's possible, whether legally that holds any water, that would be, you know, up for debate. You could, and I think this would be the way I'd recommend to do it, you could schedule a special meeting for tomorrow, which I know nobody wants to do, but you could, you could hold it telephonically. A special meeting would be just for the purpose of discussing a resolution to buy the pumps. The special or rescheduled, um, meeting has to comply with the public notice provisions to the extent that circumstances permit. So, we could post, we might not be right at twenty-four hours unless we waited until call it seven P.M. to have the meeting, but I think you'd have safe harbor, because you would've given folks enough time. You could in theory pick, you know, a time earlier in the day if it was convenient for you, but it is a special slash emergency meeting. Nine thirty-two eight and nine thirty-two nine, uh, are the statutes that deal with the public water supply and your sewer systems, you have the authority over that. And then nine nineteen thirteen, uh, gives us the ability to pass an ordinance or resolution necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, safety, uh, or, or the support of the municipal government, existing public institutions, et cetera. So, um, I think we've got at least, you know, fair argument, the pump could give out at any time, and it causes enough of a problem where, uh, a, a resolution to expend the funds, uh, under nine nineteen thirteen, to get the pumps as soon as possible would be, um, supportable under that statute, you could do it within this twenty-four hour period, um, and, and it's the best we can do to mitigate or avoid an emergency. That would be how I'd recommend to do it, wait a day and then vote on this, but nothing else. And that resolution should take immediate effect, which would then authorize Dale to go buy the pumps, which he should probably do super quick.
Well, yeah, since it's gonna take ten to twelve weeks anyway, so. Everybody alright with having a telephonic meeting at seven, seven o'clock tomorrow night?
So how do I do that, because I won't be able to post the agenda tonight until this meeting is over, which will be passed in twenty-four hours.
Well, so, and that's why I, that's why I say, it says in, in one twenty-five, one point one, for any special or rescheduled meeting, each political subdivision shall comply with the public notice provisions of this section for a regular meeting, to the extent that circumstances permit. So, we have to do this, the sooner we do it, the sooner we buy that, which is why I say if you wanted, you could have it at four o'clock tomorrow. We post the notice, put it on our Facebook page, or if we, if we have one, and we've done the best we can to comply with the notice provision, because it is a special meeting that we kinda have to have. And we're, we're doing that instead of choosing to just vote without an agenda item tonight, so we're giving the public as much notice as we can under the circumstance. Does that, does that answer your question or not really?
Twenty hours, or whatever.
Right.
Nineteen, whatever. I mean, somebody could still come and complain, but I think that the, to the extent circumstances permit, language gives us about as much safe harbor as we can hope for in terms of trying to comply with the statute.
I also happen to know that there's case law on a county commission, like, acting as the zoning board, um, and in that case, they made an amendment to how it works, and how something works, because I don't get the case super, super in-depth, but, um, the circuit court in that one said that they had to have a claim to a due process, like, reason to why they would have had to have been heard or should have been heard at that meeting. And I question whether or not this would present such a situation where a citizen has like a real claim to be heard on us expending money on an emergency pump, that you obviously by another statute have full authority to run. That's just a thought that I, I literally was looking at that case today.
I'm a little concerned about the misdemeanor. Yeah.
I'd curious.
Well, two weeks. Let me ask you a question, if it's gonna take ten to twelve weeks, what's wrong with having the meeting on Wednesday?
Or two weeks from now.
Well, or two weeks from now.
Does that change it to twelve to fourteen weeks?
I think if we wait two weeks, yeah, I think if we wait a day or two, shipping usually doesn't change dramatically between a single and second day.
Uh, yeah, if you wanna be absolutely safe, schedule it for Wednesday.
Wednesday at six P.M.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you're okay under twenty-five dash one point one, but if you wanna wait until Wednesday, that, that solves all the problems, and I think you have the authority under nine nineteen thirteen to.
Then we, then we can post it on the door and do everything, okay.
And it's more than twenty-four hours.
So Wednesday, the.
Seventh.
Seventh? Am I understanding?
And, and just, just practically speaking, um, if for some reason somebody says that it's not truly an emergent circumstance under nine nineteen thirteen, by the time you have ordered and gotten the pumps in, the resolution would've become effective anyway, and again, to your point, you know, who's, who's gonna claim their due process, right, was harmed, or that they didn't have an opportunity to. who's gonna claim their due process, right, was harmed, or that they didn't have an opportunity to at least be heard on?
Yeah, and I, and I kind of do question whether or not the end of the meeting is the necessary point where we say that they've been put on notice, because I think everyone has put on notice that we're having a meeting now. And we talked about it earlier in the meeting, so they might have been put on notice from the moment we said we're gonna talk about this, but.
Could be.
I would say you would put on notice.
I don't want to be the case law that decides that.
I do, I want to create a case book now.
That's why, that's why website would be a plus. And what time Wednesday on the seventh?
Six PM.
Six PM, okay.
So we're all meeting telephonic, are you?
How's that gonna work?
How do we do that? Do we just do a?
Zoom or what?
Uh.
Just probably. Well, I can't guarantee I'll have the tablets up and dispersed by then, but, um, uh, we could do all via, I could do a mass phone call, put all of you on one phone call. That's the only item that would be on the agenda.
You could, it'd be practically speaking, practically speaking, probably be easiest to, and many of you could come in here as you could.
I was gonna suggest that I can be, I can be here.
The other thing that we have to do is we have to make this available to the public. And the only other reason to do that is by broadcast, so if you have it here, and at least some of you are here, then you've got the space, the public can come in and listen. And we could do it that way.
Otherwise, when you do a conference call, you couldn't, I suppose, publicize the link with the call in number, but most conference calls have a limit on how many people can get on it, so.
Well, whoever's not able to be here will call you. Just make sure that they have your contact information.
I'll be here.
Okay.
All right. So, now, I, I don't want to stop you from legal updates, but the very next section is basically this flat map, and that's probably a legal update as well, so.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't have much to say about them, other than we're, uh, as I understand it, Darla, the county is acquiring some land from the
Railroad?
The railroad, right.
So they talked about it like fair, fair, fair.
So they've got plots. They're right here, if you want to look at them. Pretty straightforward. They need to be signed. I suppose then we would need a motion to, would need permission to sign those documents.
Giving you permission to sign?
I believe it is the mayor that's supposed to sign them.
I think the mayor and myself.
City finance officer.
So the county has started the process. Um, they had it surveyed, and so Chris Lawrenson was the surveyor. Um, one of the parcels is just north of the existing elevator where Jay Clark's driveway is. So south of the railroad tracks on the west side of the road of Iowa. There's a small little section that will go to the elevator.
Are Clark's still gonna be able to use a boat?
I would assume so. Um, and then the second section is, um, the, uh, the road that the fairgrounds uses, or that this, yeah, the FCS uses for all the trucks coming in. The one that we put a lot of gravel on to secure it. And that one's being sold to Union County.
So they're gonna own the road, we're gonna own the fairgrounds.
Right.
Railroad is gonna own them, the trees, passive tracks.
Right.
What about that water access?
Our water meter is in the trees. So that would still be railroad.
So who is signing?
It'd be myself and the mayor.
Mayor, city finance officer, two spots. I don't know, I guess I'll need to see where.
On the side is here and here.
Same thing.
Did you ask for a motion?
I would need a motion, yes.
I will make a motion granting permission to the mayor and, excuse me, city finance officer to sign the flat map.
Two, two survey plots.
Oh, excuse me. Two survey plots.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any other discussion?
When you say to survey, are you using that as a, a verb, or are you using that as, we're doing both as?
No.
A W O.
Okay, just, sorry. I was just making sure.
There are two different documents here.
I just didn't know if we were doing them all as one, or if we were just authorizing you to get them to be surveyed, because I thought that would be.
So I do have a question. On that transfer, how does that affect the lease? That, that ninety-nine year lease between the city and the county?
I don't know.
Assuming if you, if you became the owner of the part that's leased, that lease is over. It's hard.
Well, the, the road has always been railroad property. Railroad property is, is, as I measured it, uh, goes about a foot away from the Lions Club building. So the road is, and part of the fairgrounds has always been railroad property.
So that will operate as a private road, then, correct?
It will operate as a county road.
Okay.
I assume, since this county's taking it over.
Well, it would be township as opposed to, I mean, it's county ultimately, but township would have the care and care of it. Am I correct?
Whoever, whoever they designate, if they can get somebody to take care of it.
I don't think it'd be a county road if it's on county property. I'd have to look at it, but if it's, I mean, is this an access road? This is not a, yeah, that's, I don't think it's gonna be treated as an actual road in the same sense that you treat like a county number road or township road.
Well, the reason why I ask is I, I own property on two oh nine south, and that runs parallel with that same road. And that is, the upkeep on that falls to the township. And that's why I asked the question, who does, who does the upkeep on that road? Because that takes a lot of traffic and that beats the beans out of the road.
Well, I imagine it's not gonna be our problem if it's owned by the county. I, I don't know what the township's gonna say or what the county's gonna say, but it, you know, it's not, if it belongs to the county unless they have some sort of agreement with us, it shouldn't be our responsibility.
I, I wonder about why the county's doing this, but I'm thinking maybe they're getting some, some input from farmers and saying that the elevator's paying taxes, maybe they should have a better road. I don't know.
I, well, my understanding is that the, uh, the elevator is, has been under a, uh, kind of a, I, I hate to use the word moratorium, because that's not right, but they've had a tax abatement. So they're not, technically, they're not paying taxes on it.
Yes, they are. They're just not paying the full taxes until like next year for some of the bins.
I feel like we're out in weeds here.
Yeah, um, is there any other discussion regarding the motion on the floor?
I don't know who seconded it.
Dave seconded. Melissa made the motion, Dave seconded. Hearing no more discussion, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
One no. Four yes. Motion passes. Excuse me.
So we don't need fourteen?
Yeah, we're just gonna, that was already two different plats. All right. The next section is an executive session if needed pursuant to S D C L one twenty-five, two, three, legal slash contractual matters. Necessary?
I don't see any need for it.
Fifteen is gone. Then we'll move on to sixteen, finance officer.
Um, so the only updates that I have is, um, before I went on to town, I did send out several notices about dead trees that are in town. Um, and I know that some people have followed up on that, so I'll continue to follow up on the letters. Um, I don't know if anyone noticed, but the light that goes on the Alcestars sign on the south had gotten damaged, and so I had Axel repair that, so now that is lit up again. Wanda did the leaded copper testing. Um, we're required to do that every three years. Um, we choose ten homes within the city and send them a vial on Monday, and they take their water sample on Tuesday morning and bring it to us, and then we ship them out. Was it Tuesday or Wednesday you shipped them?
Uh, Tuesday afternoon.
Tuesday afternoon, so we'll be getting the results of that in the near future. And that is pretty much all I have.
All right. How about the warrants? Would we have an opportunity to look over their warrants? I would need a motion to approve those warrants.
I'll make, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve all warrants.
Second.
Motion made by Darla and seconded by Marcus, any discussion? Hearing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, passed. Alliance phone package account upgrade. So, I, I was in here a couple days ago, excuse me, and discussed with Wanda the fact that Alliance has a fantastic voicemail that's assigned to anybody that wants it. It costs three dollars for, um, voicemail, caller ID, and call waiting. Well, we're paying four dollars for just caller ID. So it's actually gone down in cost, so I told them, do it. We save a buck and we have Alliance's voicemail. The nice part about Alliance's voicemail is that if you hook it up to the Alcestars FO email address and recall, it comes right to your email inbox. Outstanding.
I got my first email, voicemail today.
They're, they're very nice. Uh, you can delete all of them and they stay right there on your emails, and I've got voicemail from years ago.
So you don't get them on your phone, you get them on your?
You do get them on your phone, and you can, you can be in Aberdeen, Maryland and dial this telephone number and hit a column, no, excuse me, a, a star, and then put in your four-digit code, and you can listen to your voicemails, delete them, save them as new, save them as old, whatever, and then you could delete those and it's still in your email inbox, so.
Isn't technology wonderful?
Yeah, I, I just thought saving a buck and getting three, three packages for a dollar less than what we were paying for one wouldn't be a bad idea. Health insurance compensation for full-time employees not taking city health insurance.
Me or you?
Me?
You.
Okay. So, here's a draft resolution based off our discussion the last time that I, I wrote for you folks. Um, the main point is, is what it says, and then the waiver of coverage, which is a document that I think we ought to have city employees sign who are taking this option, is that we pay the difference between what your individual uh, coverage would cost with the city vice, uh, what the cost is for your family, uh, on a spouse's or other group plan. So it costs five hundred bucks to insure Sam, the city employee, and, uh, me and my wife can get a, uh, a family plan through her insurance for, uh, seven hundred bucks. We would pay the difference, which is two hundred bucks to the employee as a form of compensation. Um, it says in there that we, we only, we only pay this provided that the difference, uh, is less than what your insurance costs would pay, so if, if, uh, it costs six hundred dollars to insure me on my wife's plan vice five hundred with the city, we wouldn't have to pay. Um, it also states in the policy, and then in the letter that the employee would sign, is that this stuff is reviewed, uh, annually, so uh, we can control our costs and verify what your costs are from year to year, whether they go up or down. Um, also, I, I, when we look at our current policy manual that's adopted, the, the best place that I found to, uh, put this was six point four, which is the section entitled benefits, our benefits are kind of scattered throughout that policy manual. Um, three point one is the, the section that really lists a lot of what the benefits are, doesn't actually define them, but six point four is the the section where we are supposed to describe benefits, so I think it would be best if this policy goes there. Doesn't have to, you can go on three point one, or it could go some other place, I think that six point four is the best spot, though. So, any questions?
I have one question.
Yeah.
Where it says, full-time employees may voluntarily waive employee health insurance benefits if they are covered under another qualified plan. Does that mean, like if, uh, if one of our employees said, I don't want health insurance, then they have to have it?
So, that's a, that's a good point. I suppose you could refuse health insurance.
I mean, I don't know why anybody would, I'm just.
No, that's, that, that's a good point, and I, what I, if you want to waive it, that's fine. Um, we could, we could change that a little bit or tweak it, but what I think we need to avoid is saying, I want to, unless it's cheaper, I don't want to take the city's offered plan, but I'll take two hundred bucks out of the three hundred you would pay for a different plan. And, and I say that because at some point, at least the way a lot of, most of these things work, as I understand it, is, is it's better to buy and have it in volume. If, if you have, if you go from eleven employees to four employees, your, your price starts to differ, so, um, I guess if we wanted to allow people to just outright refuse and not be on somebody else's policy, we should do that, but I don't think we should compensate them if they want to go get their own policy, because it, it could, it, it cheapens our buying power, I guess. But you're, you're correct, and the way that that's written now, it does limit them to either taking ours or or taking somebody else's, although I don't think you would interpret this as saying you, you have to take our health insurance. You know, you could just refuse and that's that. That answer your question, or?
Yeah, I was just wondering if that was, if it's like a either or situation, or it's going to cause, if people are going to turn it down, and it's gonna cause the city more to cover each person, I would say that it probably isn't our best interest to make sure that they are covered somewhere.
I have no problem requiring them to take it if they're not gonna have something else, like that's just gonna be part of the terms of our employment, so.
You worded that better than I did, so thank you, that's what I was trying to say.
No problem.
Well, I would need a motion if we were going to update or make the resolution change.
I do have one quick question, because I, I don't have the whole policy manual memorized. Um, but would we need to include like a title or a heading in section six point four?
So six point four, you, you could, yeah, six point four currently just says benefits, let me get to that. Six point four, benefits that follow are those offered by the city to employees. These benefits are afforded according to the Individual Employee Classification C Policy. And that's currently what six point four says, so, um, you could, you could add a, you know, alternative health insurance or, yeah, you could add something, or you could just slap it in there as an either or. If you wanted to add a title, that would not be a major change to the resolution either.
I'm glad if it says benefits in it, clearly tells them that this is a benefit we're describing, that's good.
My biggest concern is that God forgive me, take it or leave it kind of thing, that, that they understand that. My biggest concern is that, God forgive me, take it or leave it kind of thing, that they understand that either you insure with the spouse or you insure with the city. That's, and that's yet, because I noticed that any payments, then we get into a thing with possibly the South Dakota retirement system, that payments made, and that would be excluded from that. So if you took payments, if you took a cash payment, that, as I understand it, reading through that document, that that would not be covered, that would not go to your South Dakota retirement system.
So any, I think I understand what you're saying, but any compensation that somebody who's electing to, as I understand it, anybody who's electing to receive in lieu of coverage by the city is taxable income. So that's, as far as being included in your salary and, you know, FICA and those types of things, it is taxable. I don't know how it relates to the retirement system.
In the retirement system, I saw that that was an exception, that that got booted out, that that wasn't. Because of the way it was described. I'll show you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I, sorry, I'm just gonna say something real quick. I do think the way I would read shall, it would require it. I think that it is take it or leave it. You either take the job and you get it or you specifically file this waiver. And I just wanted my official opinion on the thing, like if, that way, like I think we should be clear about whether or not it's required. And I think it is clear. So if people don't want to be required, I think that's what we should discuss.
It would still need a motion.
I move to approve that resolution number twenty, twenty fifteen, titled, "The Resolution of the City of Alcestars to Set City Policy Regarding Health Insurance Coverage and Amending the City's Policy Thereon."
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion?
When will this take effect?
This would take effect after the publication stuff for standard ordinances, so.
No, resolutions are one time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, resolutions. So it would be, I want to say within two weeks.
So.
It's effective right after its, resolutions are effective when we need it upon publication. So it will be effective next Thursday.
How do you pro rate it in my book?
Do we want to change the effective date?
You could change it to January one.
In that last, the last month's council meeting, that was.
That was the intent last month's council meeting.
To have it be effective. The last month's council meeting was review the draft of the resolution tonight, have a formal adoption in November, effective January one.
Also, while we're on discussion, kind of sort of technically, Marcus, the full-time employee shall receive was stolen by me from Oklahoma. So at least one of them needs to allocate stuff that says that. Sure.
Is there any other discussion?
So we're ahead of the game.
We are ahead of the game.
For once.
So did we want to change the effective?
It already has been set.
To be January one.
January first.
Well, I think the res-
No, I don't think we've said it officially.
I think the resolution would need to, we just add a line that says, "Effective January one of twenty twenty-one."
And does that substantively change the resolution, such that we couldn't pass it tonight?
No.
Okay.
So we're just gonna have that line.
Yeah.
This resolution shall become effective.
Should I withdraw my motion so we can amend?
Sure.
Up to you guys. Okay. I move to pass resolution number twenty, twenty fifteen, a resolution, titled, "The Resolution of the City of Alcestars to Set City Policy Regarding Health Insurance Coverage and Amending the City's Policy Thereon with an Effective Date of January one, twenty twenty-one."
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. How do you vote?
Aye.
Opposed? No, yes. Reminders and updates. You didn't extra hours sleep, huh? November first, change your clocks back and the new landfill hours, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, three P M. to five P M. And Saturday eight to noon.
Have we given any more thought about changing the lock, given that it's had multiple instances where it's left open?
I honestly haven't had a chance to talk with Parker about getting a different lock, padlock. But he will be doing some shopping this week, so I will talk to him about getting a different lock and some keys made.
I do have a question of Pat. The election, our balloting place, I talked to the auditor and that is in this building now.
It is in this room?
Okay, so we need to, we need to publish that.
I do not.
They, or?
That is New York County.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure because I hadn't seen anything and it's probably time to give it out, so, okay.
And a while back, I did talk to Gordon about doing a story.
The auditor published something this week.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to number seventeen, H R C update. The only thing I can give you concerning the H R C is that more work has been done at the fourplex. A lot of landscaping needed to be taken care of and some downspouts had to be fixed as well. Other than that, we haven't officially set a meeting yet, but I know that the chairman said we're going to have a meeting. I just can't tell you when that'll be. Full meeting. Alcestars Community Center update.
Before I went on vacation, I spoke with Josh, the architect, and I asked for an update. And they were working on the concrete specs and he thought that they were running ahead of schedule, which was great. I assumed that there would be some earth movement or something. By the time I got back, I checked, there's nothing. I sent an email to Josh today. He's out of the office till tomorrow. So I understand I'm having an update for you. The plan is still to do earthwork yet this fall.
I think we should get some people together on the committee and, I don't know, for, maybe, or a lecture maybe, I think. If we started on that.
All right. So then we go to the E M S update. I guess I don't know of any update, aside from the fact that Mr. Nahaba has been working and he gave all the credit to the members of the E M S squad for recruitment, so.
I think he's done a good job himself, kind of pointing us in the right direction and helping us figure out where we were going. But, yeah, we're seeing people come from the community, kind of want to help out, give a hand, so. And I'd like to thank, you know, the other members as well, and the fire department especially for having our backs. So we haven't missed any calls recently. We've been making them all, so I think that's.
I was gonna say, the nice thing working with Jeff is when we have been short-staffed, he has lined it up that we're covered.
Yeah. We're in communication every day now. During days, we, we're not even really, I mean, days are hard to fill, but we're doing, we're doing pretty good covering those two. So, yeah.
Some of the nurses at the, at the care center helped.
Yep, they're able to run as E M Ts as long as the state signs off on them. And we got them all signed off. So we have some of the nurses that, from the nursing home, that during the day are able to leave work and run a call with us. Credit to the short transport times, so.
And they've been running with now, the ambulance has been able to, they're running with even all the fires now. We never had that in the past. They run to all of our fires.
Every fire we run to, every, if the tones go off, we roll, so.
Even to the two and a, some of our serious calls, the ambulance has been on standby, ready to go. That's been unheard of. They were at a point where they weren't answering calls, so I will give them credit. It's been amazing. It's stress off mine. The fire chiefs have too, that they're responding to calls. It's great.
I guess I have one question based off of the email that I saw that showed me. One of the concerns was that most of the people we just recently added to the volunteer roster were drivers. Is that a concern to you guys? Or do you guys feel comfortable?
Because we do have nurses that have joined and it takes time. We got people that want to take the class. We got, what, three or four people that are willing to take the class right now? And that just takes time.
They joined as drivers, got their CPR. They're getting involved. I think that's a good way to start them. Because if they do it for a little bit driving and they're running the calls, hopefully then they want to do the E M T training because that is a.
It's two hundred and some hours of training, which costs a thousand bucks a person. So if we can get them vested, you know, driving and helping out around the station, I feel like they'll be more likely to stick around afterwards. So, and like I said, we do have three or four people who are wanting to take class right now. We're looking at getting a class set up in this area. So, I mean, if you guys know anybody that wants to take two, unsolicited promotion, but, yeah, we're doing pretty good right now. Still have our little issues, but we're figuring it out, so. And a nurse can run as an E M T, like I said, as long as they're signed off by the state, so we have some of those too.
I would point out, as when I was on the, we rolled with structure fires with the fire department.
Yeah, we've always ran to those.
We've always, we've always done that.
Yes, we did, we've always ran to that. Now we're running the grass fires, anything that the tones go off, we roll to. I mean, we rolled to a grass fire with Gears for the other day, so.
That's in turn.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for coming up to this.
Yeah.
Updating volunteer roster, do we need to?
As far as I know, no.
Then there's an executive session if needed and it's open-ended. Hear any interest? And so then we move on to number twenty-two.
I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn the council?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. How do you vote?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven twenty-two P M. That's very good.
It's the draft. We'll be talking about it. The public hearing is, can.
Gordon? Gordon?
It's not a variance, but it's also a reason for planning a volunteer together and it can be a variance, but it can also be a result, which is what we're looking for. It's the public hearing draft, so we're gonna do it on Sunday. But it's just to, so that you guys can hear me, but it's fire.
Gotcha. I like it.